Thank you all. We're gathered here, we're -- you probably think we just party all the time. And I swear, it feels like it because we have these executive sessions. We've been meeting since 5:00. Working on issues that, some of which will be on the agenda tonight and some of which will, at some point in the future, be on the agenda. But we aren't really partying. There are a lot of things going on. But I'm apologizing that we're starting a couple minutes late. Yes, the general topic of the executive sessions, because there were a couple of them, had to do with litigation, had to do with real estate, and had to do with regional police. So there were a number of things that we were talking about. Before we get started in the meeting, I wanted to try to adjust the procedures for tonight because, as you can see, we are pretty full. And that's, I assume, I'll learn this as we go along, but I think that we have one group of people that are concerned about what's going on with Changer Mill. And I think that there are others that are concerned about planning commission and what happened at the planning commission meeting that happened a week ago. And there are also a couple of ordinances which are up for consideration, and so there's some comments that may come from those. So trying to figure out how we can most expeditiously, not only for your board but for yourselves, handle all these things. What we've decided to do is to adjust the agenda a little bit. And this will be the order. Number one is the SCOUT presentation. Number two is the case easement payment approval. Number three is traffic calming Rosedale Road. Number four is yield sign for Fairville Road. Number five is not on your agenda, motion regarding litigation, which we'll go into at that point. And then we get to item six, which is Changer Mill. That's correct. And finally, number seven is a combination of the retirement ordinances and the planning commission process and procedures. And then we get to public comment, and finally, if it's still today, we get to adjourn. But so as you don't get too nervous about that. I'm not doing anything differently than we've done in the past. In other words, when there is a, something that's up for discussion, if there is a motion pending, I'm going to entertain discussion from the board first, and then I'm going to look to anybody in the audience that wants to comment relative to whatever is then pending. And Chief McCarthy has a microphone, and that microphone will be circulated, and any comments or questions should be addressed to that microphone and thereby to all of us, so that we'll all be able to hear. This is a tough room for people like me that wear hearing aids, because the roof muffles things, it's large, things spread out, and it's hard for me to hear. And my thought is that there are others that are in this room that have the same kind of problem. So that's why we use these, and why particularly in a larger meeting like this that we're going to be using the microphone, so everybody can hear. And then once the public comment with regard to a specific matter is heard, then we will vote on it. I'm going to ask that, to the best of your ability, that you keep your comments to five minutes or less. And secondly, if you have a written copy of your statement, would you please make it available to Lisa so that she can incorporate it in the record? If you want your statement incorporated in the record, and I assume that you would, otherwise you wouldn't make it a point to present it to us tonight. So the public comment on the agenda is, refers to at the end of the whole process, when, if there's anything in general that you wanted to present, not in relation to an item on the agenda. So I'm trying to make sure that you will all have the opportunity to be active participants in our discussion on anything about which we are going to vote. So is that clear to everybody? Okay, all right. Good. Thank you. Thank you for understanding and working with us to make this move along in a reasonable fashion. Okay, so we're up for SCOUT presentation.
Hi.
How are you?
Thank you. My name's John Mizel.
John, before you go.
Yep.
See that gentleman, please.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you. I also need you to identify yourselves on the record.
John Mizel. I'm with the Transportation Management Association of Chester County. Thank you. I appreciate the chance to address the board and Lisa tonight, and for you all making you room on your agenda tonight. Again, my name's John Mizel. I'm with the Transportation Management Association of Chester County, and I oversee the SCOUT bus line, which is one of the two public transportation bus lines that we run together with the Coatesville Link. Many of you might be familiar with our buses. They run basically between Kennett Square and Oxford with limited service to Westchester, but we're the only scheduled bus service that serves Southern Chester County. You're familiar with Rover, but that's of course on call. And also here is Scott Tallman. He's the safety officer with Craft Coaches. And we actually contract out, we oversee the bus line, and we contract out to Craft Buses who actually run the bus service, run the buses themselves. And I'm here tonight because I wanted to familiarize you with some changes that are taking place with the SCOUT bus rep, and just to familiarize you a little bit, and also talk to you a little bit about how we run things. One of the changes is the Coatesville Link and the Southern Chester County SCOUT have always been two separate bus lines with two separate names, and they're going to continue with those names, but we're sort of rolling out a new brand. We're going to have bright green buses and bright green signs, and we're calling it the Chesco Bus. So when you see that, you'll know that that's our new brand. And we hope that the, we can continue to run the SCOUT bus in the schedule that we run it, because it really is a lifeline, as you know, for many people in Southern Chester County. And it's really, for a lot of people, the only means of getting back and forth from the far reaches of Southern Chester County and into shopping and medical services and social services and doctor's appointments. And for people, and there are people who ride it a long distance, all the way sometimes into Westchester and then connect and ride it, ride something to the city. I mean, it's unbelievable how far they ride it. And we are funded through state and county grants. We had, on the SCOUT line itself, about 14,000 riders last year, which was down slightly because of budget cutbacks. We had to trim our schedule somewhat, so usually it runs about 16,000 people a year. But just to give you an idea, to serve those 14,000 riders, it cost about $391,000 last year. So it's not cheap on a per- rider basis. And what we're hoping is that we can increase our ridership. We're going to roll out a new fleet of buses that will have bright green labeling, and we're going to have these new signs that are going to replace the old, they're basically faded white signs on the SCOUT route. And we're going to roll this out in the late fall. And we are meeting with townships and meeting with boards and telling them about this and telling residents so they're familiar, and so that when they, when they hear about what's going on, and we, we're also going to have a new website, chescobus.org, and, oh, I'm sorry, chescobus.com, you'll be familiar with what's going on. The other reason we're here is that because it's, you know, we do get some, we get the majority of our funding from the state and county, but we do face a budget shortfall every year on the order of about $50,000, and we're hoping we don't have to cut back service. Many of the townships along the route actually help contribute some money to the bus line, and this being budget season, you know, we ask you to consider a contribution, a membership to TMAC in your budgetary process, because, as I said before, it's very important, public transportation route, a lifeline, really helps a lot of people who have no other means of getting around. And then some of you, I know we're here for the opening presentation by the county for the Complete Streets effort along Baltimore Pike. And that's an effort to sort of look at how we can connect bikes and pedestrians to public transportation and, you know, move people in different ways along the Baltimore Avenue corridor. And of course, the SCOUT's an important part of that, because all of our buses have bike racks. And we are working with the county to look at how to get people to, safely to the bus stops and move them around. So that effort that the county's taking or is moving forth with, on which there's going to be a meeting at the Brandywine Conservancy this upcoming Saturday morning, we're involved in that effort as well. So I appreciate all of your attention, and I won't take any more of your time, and thanks very much.
John, let me ask you a couple of questions if I can, and there may be some other questions from, from the board, and then perhaps others will want to join in. I'll ask all of them, and you can answer as you go. First of all, that $50,000, who covers that shortfall as it happens per year, number one? Number two, I now understand that it's the municipalities between Kennett Square, Kennet Township, Kennett Square, and Oxford. Can you give us an idea of how that $50,000 could be apportioned amongst those various municipalities? And does SCOUT intend to take some, some action to get the municipalities together to, to address this? And my third question is, you mentioned membership in TMAC, Transportation Management Association of Chester County. I never heard about that. I don't know any about membership, so what's that mean, and what are the implications to it? What are the benefits? What are the costs? How does that work?
Sure. First question, the short, the budget shortfall. We can make some of that budget shortfall up through applying for grants or going back to, for instance, the Chester County Commissioners and asking for more money. We might be able to get some, however, the shortfalls in past years are actually absorbed by trimming the bus schedule, which is something we don't want to do, because when you run a fixed route schedule, a scheduled bus service, and people depend on that schedule, it's very hard to cut back the routes, because as people depend on it to get to and from work and appointments, when you cut that out, it's sort of a domino effect, which is then that if people can't depend on it to get to their livelihood or to necessary appointments, then they might find other means of transportation. So we have been successful in the past getting some additional funds from the board, the Chester County Commissioners, but the, the rest of the shortfall has been absorbed by actually trimming the schedule. So unfortunately, and we're sort of seeing where things go, we just started our fiscal cycle in July, and so we've just had several months, and we're running a deficit. I don't know where it's going to end up, but, you know, we're hoping it's not as high as $50,000, but it has been in the past. The next question you asked was about...
The municipalities and proportionality amongst all of us.
So we don't have the ability to actually take an amount or a shortfall and divvy it up evenly among all the municipalities we serve. We only have the ability to appeal, to go out to each township and sort of talk about the value to the corridor in its entirety and to each township. And the last township where I'm in presentation was Penn Township, and they have been supporting the SCOUT for several years, and they support it on the order of $1,000 a year. That's what their contribution was last year. And, you know, they recognize the value to a lot of their residents, and they have been good supporters. So we can't, we don't have the power to sort of assign a monetary amount to the, to the townships, the municipalities, and say, you've got to make it up. We can only appeal. TMAC, who I work for, Transportation Management Association of Chester County, is a nonprofit group. We're located up in Malvern. And every county is made up of a number of transportation management associations. The state, there's, you know, they're all over the state. They were mandated by state law. So, you know, Bucks County has one, Chester County has one, all the counties have them, and they deal with issues having to do with everything from highways and mass transit and alternative forms of transportation, and in our case, dealing with SEPTA and bus and rail and even bike traffic and trails. So we deal with a wide range of transportation issues. So that gives you a little idea of what we do. And the next question had to do with membership, I believe.
Yes, you said...
Yes. So, so membership, we, we do get part of our revenue from membership, and membership is made up of, for instance, large employers in the Great Valley region, or municipalities. And I'm happy to send you all a list of our present members, because there are quite a few municipalities along the various bus routes, the Coatesville area bus route and the Southern Chester County area bus route. And with the membership, we give traffic updates, we hold conferences, we just had a full luncheon several weeks ago where we were talking about the future of rail travel and development in the Keystone Corridor up in the area around Downingtown and Exton. And so we sort of, not only are, we're sort of, two things. We're a management operation, we have these bus routes, but we're also kind of a brain trust, and, you know, I myself have a background in urban planning, and we're sort of here, and our cause is to further the knowledge and the discourse about transportation issues and transportation planning, and trying to find sensible solutions that make sense for Chester County, and also targeting where things are happening in the county and development, and trying to aid municipalities. And we're here to help municipalities if they need help in dealing with those issues, with transportation issues. So we're a resource for municipalities, and so membership can do all those things, as well as helping to support our bus operations. And the contributions such as the one that Penn Township makes go directly into our operational costs. And so it helps that way. And I hope that answers your question, and I gave you a better idea of how to run it.
It does very much, John. I appreciate that. Before I check and see if either of the other supervisors have any comments or questions for you, I didn't want to take you up on your offer. If you would send to us in care of Lisa, your literature, I certainly, speaking for myself at least, would like the opportunity to look at it.
Absolutely. And one of the reasons we're here also is, it's funny, we go to the townships, and a lot of people say, oh, yes, I've seen those buses. I myself have not personally ridden those buses, and after I've spoken to audiences and, you know, municipal officials, they have a better idea. When they see the bus on the road, if they don't take it themselves, they know where it's going and what it's doing.
Right.
So the next time you see a SCOUT bus or a Link bus in the Coatesville area, even if you don't take it regularly, you'll know, you know, that it's, and it's, interestingly, it's one of the only rural fixed scheduled bus routes in the entire Delaware Valley region. And we cover a long distance every day, run after run, between Oxford and into Kennett and on into Westchester, and that's a long ride. But, you know, we have a faithful ridership that depends on us.
Yes, good. Do, Bud, do you have questions?
No. Okay. Just a couple of questions. So do you, do you have an idea of what people might originate from Kennet Township, in other words, from their residences or might come to Kennet Township, either for business or, as you mentioned, healthcare? Do you have some idea of that?
So when I said that I gave you an annual ridership, I don't have the ability other than sort of spot checks on the bus. I don't have cumulative numbers of who is going where and from where. But I think it's interesting, because one thing we do know is that people use the SCOUT bus not only to go from the township and Kennet itself to outside areas and, you know, the hospital and, you know, various shopping areas along the route, but it also brings people into the area and also helps connect to, when we have stops at Longwood Gardens and the visitor's center, Chester County Visitor's Center. We do get some tourist ridership, although our bread and butter is really folks who live, work, shop, and go to appointments, social service, medical appointments in the corridor. And a lot of the folks that depend on us are the folks in the service jobs in the corridor. Walmart's a supporter of ours. A lot of their employees, you know, ride the SCOUT and the Link, along with folks who are employed in a lot of the service jobs at the various shopping areas that you all use outside, you know, Kennet and directly in Kennet. So while I can't tell you directly how, the numbers of folks that get on and off within the township, I can tell you that, that the character of the, the travel.
Are there any questions from members of the audience? Comments or questions to address to John?
Yes, sir.
You're holding, yes, I was, thank you. I'm, I'm mic up in a resident township. Can you give us some examples of municipalities that have engaged TMAC in a very proactive way? You're, in other words, to do transportation planning or even to institute additional transportation services, that sort of thing?
So the most recent example is, again, in Penn Township. They have hired a landscape architecture firm to look at their pedestrian connections within the township itself. And that includes the safety of their intersections, the existing sidewalks and trails, and how they might improve those. And they reached out to us, and I've been working together with this landscape architecture firm, because one of the things that we advocate is that as they sort of look at these issues and trying to make, because the whole thing is about knitting together what has been an autocentric environment, and trying to make it friendly to pedestrians and, you know, different forms of transportation. As they do this redevelopment, part of that is trying to make better bus stops and bus shelters, safe accommodating places along the bus route, and safe sidewalks and trails to get people there. And so I've been working with Penn Township's landscape architect as they look at the various intersections and talk about, you know, as things change in the future, what might the character of the SCOUT bus stops and the access to and from those and between them change in the future. So that's a good discourse. And to get us in on the ground floor is good, because when it comes to bus stops, we advocate the use of SEPTA standards. SEPTA has an actual manual of standards for bus stops. And while SEPTA is mainly a more urban bus route, they have standards that do apply even in suburban and rural areas. And so this, together with the Complete Streets that the county is doing, is really an effort at, you know, I think, changes that are going to come in the future again to sort of knit everything together that was sort of built in an autocentric, you know, way, and now the community is saying that they want, you know, better ways of getting around their own communities. So I think it's a, it's a good effort.
Good. I think there's another question up here.
I'm going to keep it. It's your question. Identify yourself first, please.
Okay. I'm David Lewis. Just, can you explain some of the business rules you have for establishing routes and stops, and, you know, are they near, what are they near? How do you do that?
Good question. So the way we go about looking at stops and new stops or changing stops is, first of all, centers for shopping and for medical and social services, doctors' offices. We try to put stops in a central location to serve several places at once. For an example would be at Jennersville. Our bus stop at the Jennersville Hospital can serve not only the immediate urgent care facilities, but the offices that people visit for their regular checkups at Jennersville Hospital. Across, across Baltimore Pike from Jennersville Hospital is a mobile home park. We have a stop there as well. So we look at residences, businesses, social services, and, you know, we do send out surveys, ask people, well, how is it serving you well, and how could it serve you better? So that we're constantly, not only tweaking the times and the routes, but the stops themselves. So some stops are pared off over the years, and other stops are added depending on where they're needed or... they're needed or not needed. And so, in a more... In the outer reaches of Oxford, we stop at the Borough Hall. We stop at sort of five different points through Oxford Borough equally spaced because that's the end of the line there. We want to make sure that we get everyone that needs to come eastward or northward. And then, in the heart of what I always say, the scoot route, which is sort of from Jennersville on into Kennet, it's really the hubs. It's, you know, the hospital, the YMCA, Luther House, and then all of the various shopping malls or shopping squares or facilities that you have in Kennet. And then, when it gets through Kennet, it goes to Longwood and then on up to Westchester.
Are there any other questions? I want to thank you very much, John. It was a very interesting presentation. And I look forward to getting the material.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. The second item on our agenda is the case easement payment approval. And for some quick background on this, the case property, which is along Bayard, close to Old Kennet Road, is one of the parcels that the township has pursued in conjunction with the land trust to put into conservancy easement. And last fall, I guess it was, we made an application for financial assistance through the county and received a grant to share in a certain amount of the expense for the easement that we were negotiating. And that was approved. And we're now in the position to be able to go to settlement on that property. And the case property easement is for... The township's share of the total cost of the easement is $426,000. And that is... That's going to go to settlement this month. And I have a check here be payable to the land conservancy, which organization will be handling the easement process. So, may I have a motion? Will we accept this?
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? Does anybody in the audience have any discussion about this?
Yes, I do.
Yes, sir.
Is it the entire general property? Or are there...
Go ahead. People can't hear you. I know we know you, but if I stop, I'm going to keep it.
I'm Michael Elling. Is it the entire general property? I know there were some lots subdivided some time ago on Bayard, on that property. Are those reserved by the owner for future use?
No.
There's only one lot that was sold. The rest have been eased.
So, that has been sold?
Yes. So, it's 36 acres approximately.
Any other questions? Comments? Yes, Mr. Yutter.
Jeff Yutter, Kent Township. How much did the county come up with?
Wasn't it 400? $330,000 again.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
And I'm in favor as well. Give me a great deal of pleasure to write that check, I want you to know. It's really important what the work is done for conservancy by the township, by the various committees of the township, by the land trust, and by the other conservancy groups that we've worked with and expect to work with in the future. So, it's a very encouraging thing. And this is a very important property in terms of where of conservancy in the township. It's really kind of a keystone place. It's very, very good. Okay, that's case easement. Now, we have traffic coming on Rosedale Road in the area of Bayard. And I believe is...
Well, Roger's going to speak with us about this.
There he is, Roger.
Rich Leff and Roger and I were discussing traffic calming, some sort of traffic calming on Rosedale Road as you approach Bayard because of the fast traffic and people pulling out in front of other cars. So, tonight, we just wanted to discuss with Roger what options we may have for that.
Roger, before you start... Go ahead. But I just wanted to bring everybody up to speed on this. The safety committee had previously made a recommendation in concert with Chief of Police about various corners in the township which were somewhat dangerous. And this was one of them in which we had considered putting in a four-way stop. Right now, there is only a two-way stop. That is, on opposite sides of Bayard entering onto Rosedale. Rosedale's a through road. It was decided, I guess it was done by the input from PennDOT. Am I remembering this correctly, Chief?
No, it was our traffic engineer.
Traffic engineers.
Junction with the PennDOT regulations.
Now, we would not do the four-way stop at this point, but look into alternatives to see whether there was some way of handling it. So, that brings us up to where we are. Roger.
Roger Lau, Kent Township. I was asked just last week, I think it was, about the traffic calming of rumble strips. We have... This has been... Two studies were done. The need to report was done, and then it was redone by our engineers looked at. Most of the safety features that they came up with have been taken care of as trees, elevations, that kind of stuff has been addressed. It is a straight-through road. I have talked to the chief about it. Rumble strips, if you put them on, they can be done. They're not recommended just for a straight-through road. Usually, rumble strips are set up to let you know that there's a change in the road approaching, as in direction, or that there's an upcoming stop. Gives you warning. Just to put them on a straight-through road, it can be done, but I think you're going to gather a lot of road noise, which the neighbors are going to... Is going to be one of the problems with rumble strips. Because the car will just run through them, make the noise, and be gone. And the people who live right there are going to come up. Then they're going to all be here, you know, about the rumble strips. We have done this before on Hill and Dale, out by Woodchuck Way. They fought for it. We did a couple of samples. And less than two days, they wanted them removed due to the noise. It's not that it can't be done. It's just, most of the accidents, I think, I don't know, the chief might be able to tell you, most of them are human error. People just pull out thinking it's a four-way stop. The straight-through rumble strips aren't going to affect the people pulling out. It's not that it can't be done. I'm just saying, yeah, rumble strips can be done, but I think it's going to create another problem and not correct anything. It's there, myself. But as in other traffic device calmings, there's not really enough right-of-way to change the angles of the road. We have a stream right at the intersection, so you can't widen it or do a circle or any other type of traffic calming like that. It is recommended for a four-way stop. Maybe a flashing light would be an option. But, I mean, to look into rumble strips, I can do them, but I think it's going to create another problem. But it's something that can't be tried, at least.
Well, I mean, the idea would be to... I mean, you did a really good job with the pavement on Rosedale Road, and it's a straight shot. But people from both directions approach fairly quickly. So, even if you still have that same human error, if they're traveling, it'll slow a rate of speed. If there's an accident, maybe it's a little bit less dangerous. So, you may not be able to affect every car. But are there some traffic-controlling calming means that can be tried to be employed that would help? And I think that was the basic question. Rumble strips was one thing when I was approaching a toll, I said, "Oh, God." That was one of the things that leapt to mind. But also around that area, and I don't know where else you put them, the homes are pretty far back. It's back from the road, so I don't know how far the sound travels there. And it may depend on the shape of the land also. And might be worth talking to the neighbors as possibilities, but I don't know if there's something else that could be done. Because you did such a good job with the room.
Thank you. I mean, if that's something you'd like to try, we can try it. It's a... I think there's other... I don't know what other options there are for traffic calming there other than islands or... But we have a stream, so we can't widen a road or make directional islands like down in Greenville or something.
Right. I mean, that would be too big.
Yeah.
You see other things. You see kind of those little guys in the middle of the road that get knocked down all the time. I mean, there's... You can try to make the road look narrower somehow to slow traffic down on the road. I mean, I just don't know. But I think that was the question because if anyone tried to pull out there, there are people going fairly quickly across that. So, instead of making a four-way stop sign, what are our other options? Because I think people would still like to be able to go through without stopping.
I can try. Anything you guys want to try. I mean, there's tapered irons you can put down to give the effect of, you know, a faster speed.
Maybe you could work with Tom Wilkes and come up with some ideas of what we could do.
Then park a police car at the corner.
That's a borough solution.
Do we have any other comments or questions? Yes.
Okay, thank you, Albert. My name is Tim Henry. I'm a resident. My thought in this regard is there... I've been through a number of intersections where there are not blinking yellow lights, but some caution lights on the throughway, not on the stop sign side, so on Rosedale, and maybe some speed limit reductions. And the other thing that at least tends to work for me is the... And we use it in the township, is the little sign that has, "Your speed limit is whatever it is," and it flashes. So, you know whether you're speeding or not based on the speed limit of the road. So, but maybe some of these other options are worth considering. There may be something else, too.
We have one of these speed limit counter signs, and we move it around. They're about $2,000. The... And not to think about this, but the way I read this is something the Lord may want to check, is you can't put those rumble strips up unless there's a stop in advance. But that's something he may want to check because of liability. We, at Rosedale and McFarland, we had a serious problem. We put the red flashing light up first. I think we have another toll to do that. It's not very costly. But we wound up going to a four-way stop anyway, and that signal required a PennDOT approval. And for Rosedale and McFarland, we must have eliminated accidents, at least the serious ones. So, these are something to consider also. But I think you want to talk about liability on the rumble strips.
Thank you, Albert. We'll look into it further and report back. We've had a number of good suggestions tonight and give us something that we can talk about with the police and with the road support and with the supervisors, see if we can find some way. The staying with the traffic issue for item number four, which is yield sign for Fairville Road.
That's another issue that we want Roger here to talk about. On Fairville, when people turn left to go onto Center Mill, we were talking about maybe putting a yield sign there because people aren't yielding to that traffic. And I know Roger brought up that the trees need to be trimmed along there because that is one of the issues for people that can't see the cars.
They were done.
And that was done. So, what's your opinion on that?
I don't... I don't believe you can have a yield sign on a straightaway to a left-hand turn. It's not a... It's like putting a yield sign up at a driveway on the left-hand side of the road. It's just, people won't know what they're yielding to. There's nothing says you can't put a yield up there. It's just, I wouldn't say that it's... Would recommend because it's not going to acknowledge to the driver what they're yielding to. It's not a narrow bridge. It's not a... If there's a curve in the road, but yield to left-hand turns or oncoming traffic, we could put up. But people... I don't feel a yield sign is going to correct somebody just to make a left-hand turn to somebody else. But I don't know if that's a liability if we put a yield sign up on a straightaway that doesn't require a yield as in to oncoming traffic as is a narrow bridge, a one-lane bridge, or a... I don't know how you could legally identify it as that.
All right. How about if you and Albert work on that to end with our traffic engineer and see if we can come up with a more clearly defined solution? Have we had a problem there? Do we have a problem with that?
There has been some incidents there.
Yeah.
But I don't know the number. I know there's been, and some close calls.
There are close calls. I have sat there with the police car and watched it, but it's not the available time to do that. What they do is cut that short in front of cars at the stop sign. The yield sign won't work because you have to be able to support that sign as to why you're putting it up there. And there's been almost no accidents there. So, Roger and the traffic engineer?
Yeah, I mean, it's just something to, once again, calm people coming around that corner and then also when they make a decision. You know, obviously, they should be compensing, but it's also coming around that corner from the neighboring township.
I understand what you're trying to get at, but there are the regulations that we have to use to support it. It could be, and I will get with him, it could be the dotted line that you see around a lot of intersections. That could be, too. But I need to get with you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you all. Okay. Now, we're down to the item that's not on the agenda, and that's update on our gun law. Now, a little bit of background here. As you will remember, we have created an ordinance regarding the circumstances when a person can use a gun in the township. We then revisited that ordinance and made certain amendments to it. And it is now in place. And at the same time, was passed just a couple of days ago, the state legislature and the governor passed and signed into law a law that does various, very unusual things. Basically, it allows anybody, including an organization made up of members, to sue municipalities to hold... To attempt to hold the gun legislation as a violation of state law. And it permits getting unusual damages, including fines, penalties, and legal fees. getting unusual damages, including fines, penalties, and legal fees assessed against those municipalities, the effect of which is to attempt to scare municipalities into getting rid of their gun ordinances. I've heard today of one significant community up in Montgomery County that just went out and canceled its ordinance. The supervisors have, your supervisors have talked about this. We don't think that we are in violation of the act as it has been written and passed, but on the advice of council, believe that it is unconstitutional legislation. And we've also learned that the minority chairman of the Senate Judiciary Committee and Senator representing the 17th Senatorial District, as well as other legislators and the city of Philadelphia, are all planning on suing the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, including Samuel Smith, Speaker of the House of Representatives, Jim Crowley, Lieutenant Governor of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, and Thomas Wingate Corbett, Governor of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, in Commonwealth Court to determine whether this legislation is unconstitutional. Having reviewed the proposed lawsuit and looking at what entities as beginning, and this is just beginning, this whole process, are going to be included in this, and recognizing that it will be resolved before the end of the year, we've talked about whether the township wants to be a party litigant into this legislation, or, excuse me, this lawsuit. And with that in mind, I believe we have a motion to be presented.
Right, so I'd like to move to authorize the township solicitor to take all actions necessary to join the township as a party plaintiff in the lawsuit entitled Leach versus Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, in order to participate in a procedural challenge to the Act 192 of 2014 regarding amendments to the Uniform Firearms Act.
Is there a second?
I'll second, but I'd like to add, as long as it's not, no cost to this council.
All right. And what we've, what we've talked about is that, that council is authorized, if there's no cost, to go forward, and if there is cost, to come back to us and discuss that with us. Shouldn't that be in there?
That's fine, if that's the way you would like it included. All right, thank you. I second that change.
Is that amendment acceptable, Mr., to Dr. Leffler?
It is with one clarification, that I presume we have to pay our lawyer to, or solicit to actually do the work beyond that. Okay, yes, it is.
What with the entire?
Yeah, okay, so it's acceptable.
Other than?
Other than the usual, okay, anyway, yes, it's acceptable.
All right, so it's been moved and seconded, including the amendment, and so I want to open it up for discussion. Do any of the board members want to discuss this?
Well, I just want to talk about a learning through it, so, I mean, I'm more of a scientist and less of a lawyer, so I learn through this process. And for those of you who have not been following, we actually have been following this process along, and the, this was the last act passed by our senators and representatives in Harrisburg, and was the last act signed by Governor Corbett this year. And it started off as a House bill, which got passed and didn't go anywhere, and then there was a Senate bill on something to do with.
Yeah, making it a criminal act to steal precious metals.
Right.
Yeah, or top of large.
Yeah, and then, so in the last week of the session, the way Pennsylvania is always run, they somehow decided to take two things and stick them together and call it a law. And since it affects the township, if it can be done at little cost to the township, then it, if this lawsuit is successful, it would remove a potential risk to the township of leaving this gun discharge ordinance on the books, and so that's why I thought it was something in the township's interest.
I would like to also add that, as many of you did, we went through a lot of time and energy within the township discussing the appropriate use of guns. And we've had lawsuits that were based on this ordinance. We've reviewed it and made amendments to it to make it a little bit more efficient and appropriate for what the residents of the township felt was appropriate, and it seems wholly inappropriate that having spent this energy on behalf of the residents of the township, we should back off this concern now. And when this lawsuit arose and we had the opportunity of being involved, we thought it would be appropriate to look into our inclusion on behalf of the township. So that's what's motivated us in this whole matter. Are there any comments or questions from those that are gathered here today?
Hi, I'm Chris Burkett. I think it's interesting that you would use the term "the unusual thing that the state did." The unusual thing seems to me that they were protecting Second Amendment rights. I'm not sure how appropriate it is for the township to engage in this lawsuit. I don't know how much money has been spent on legal fees at this point to create the ordinance originally, to have it thrown out by a judge, then to recreate it, now to get involved here. I heard there's an amendment to this motion, but it just concerns me that we're butting into something that we have no business butting into.
Thank you. Mike?
Mike Elling again. I don't see the value to the township in spending our money for this purpose. I assume this lawsuit's going to go forward, and it will be solved and decided on its merits, and whether we participate or not, we will benefit or lose from the decision made by appropriate judges.
Yep, and we've talked about both of these concerns in discussing this in executive session, and it was felt, to answer your question, Mike, that being a part of the group of municipalities that are adversely affected in the ability of that, of those municipalities to exercise their constitutionally given authority to protect the interests of their residents, it was felt that having a large group of municipalities with a broad spectrum of conflicting, of contrasting interests would make the impact of this legislation more realistic, and so it was felt it would be appropriate to go forward. In terms of, Chris, your comment, my recollection is that the judge didn't throw out the lawsuit, the, our ordinance, he didn't have the power to do that, and there is a serious question whether one's Second Amendment rights are being impacted in any way by our legislation, our ordinance, because we aren't doing anything to preclude anybody from owning or transporting or otherwise using their weapons. All we've done is set up reasonable standards in a, in an environment where people live close together and have to put up with the potential risks of ricocheting bullets and the noise of gunfire at any hour, day or night. Residents felt that that was inappropriate, and your board of supervisors felt that it was inappropriate, and now it needs to be dealt with, so that's, that's where we are, and if it was appropriate to do it in the first place, then I think that we have a duty to carry out that intention, and if it's inappropriate that we have done it, this lawsuit will bring that to a head. So this brings it to a resolution, and probably the most inexpensive and most practical way of doing it, because we are, we are just the hair on the end of the dog's tail, and you've got Philadelphia and a bunch of other municipalities that are carrying the burden of this lawsuit. But I think it's important that we be there as a statement of our commitment to what the residents have been concerned about. Are there any other comments or questions?
I have a follow-on question, if I might please. The cost of this suit, it sort of concerns me that perhaps in this, approving this vote now, you're allowing an open-ended funding. Bob made a comment about the cost, limiting the cost. I'd like to suggest that you include, as part of the motion, a limited amount of money.
Well, we actually said at no cost, we amended my, to meet Bob's request, that at no cost to the township, albeit except for our current lawyer to explore our participation. So if there's any additional cost, we will come back to a public meeting. Right?
That's right. We all heard that.
Okay, so we'll come back.
Chris, did you have other comments or?
No.
Re-bubble? There's a question. Albert?
Hi, my name is Lynn Lockman. I would just like to take the opportunity to thank the supervisors for their most eloquent reasoning on behalf of the residents of the township.
Thank you, thank you.
Yes, this sort of catches me off-guard, I mean, maybe this is old news here.
Name, please.
David Lewis. But can you at least give me the top five points of the ordinance that you proposed and are going forward with? I know it's old news maybe for somebody, but it's new news for me.
The ordinance was passed a year ago, and it's in effect right now, and if you'd like to, I'd have a very difficult time. Okay, I will try. It's on the website, we can give you a copy. What it does is regulates when you can shoot, and where you can shoot, and what kind of backup and safety has to be in place in order to shoot on your property. That's basically all it does.
Okay.
Okay, so unless there's any other comments, I'll call for a vote.
Aye.
Okay, I'm in favor as well, so it passes. Thank you. Okay, that puts us down to, oh. Yeah. A vote on ownership of Chandler Mill Bridge. Is there a motion to address?
So I'd like to move that township officials take all necessary action to obtain title ownership of the Chandler Mill Bridge from Chester County, with the intention of maintaining the bridge's historic nature. Period.
Is there a second?
No.
There's a second. Okay, any comments from the board?
Yeah, I'd like to make a short one. The good news is it'll probably be done a lot sooner and retain its historic designation. The bad news is ten attachable paperwork from now on. And finally, I wonder what tomorrow's news will be.
Okay, I have a statement. Usually I'm a little bit longer than that, but shorter than you, so I don't think bear with me while I read this, and the themes are different, but, you know, I'll try to address some of those. So, over this past year, as several options have been evaluated by our engineers and presented to the public and evaluated in executive session, plural, I hope that you agree that we've not come to this meeting in haste. As the bridge has been closed to traffic for about four years with weight restrictions for over 30 years, and given the magnitude of the decision, as Bob alluded to, I felt it's important, first, to determine the options, estimate the cost, and obtain public input over this year. My first is one of your supervisors. If Kennet Township does not take ownership of Chandler Mill Bridge, so if this resident does not pass, then Chester County, the current owner, is planning a new two-way, two-lane bridge. The direct cost to Kennet Township would be very little. It would take about, though, eight to 10 years to build, at a total cost of about $3 million, virtually all of that with federal and state money. So when compared to alternative routes, though, the Chandler Mill Road, the road itself that the bridge feeds, is now effectively obsolete, because cars and trucks, compared to when it was first built, can easily climb hills on those straighter, faster, and alternative routes. This option would also not address the current inability of emergency vehicles to cross the bridge for at least eight more years. Thus, I believe this costly option, which needly increases our nation's debt, to open a bridge to more traffic on a lightly-used road, is not an option I'd like to pursue. There are a number of variations that could be done, but to focus the discussion on two distinct attractive options which might happen down the road, there is follows. I look at it, the first option is preserving the historic bridge for the next 100 years and reopening it to one-way vehicular traffic. I call it the way it was. The cost to Kennet Township would be about $1.25 million, minus any other grants and other money, and it would take about two to three years to complete. It would then be able to carry emergency vehicles, something not recommended for over 30 years due to weight restrictions. Another option is to preserve this historic bridge for about the next 25 years, keep it closed to regular vehicle traffic the way it is right now, and reopen it, though, to emergency vehicles. The cost to Kennet Township is less than the first option, at about 3/4 of a million dollars, minus grants and other monies that we may find. It would take a similar time to complete. The major difference is that the replacement of the steel beams crossing the stream, which would lessen the immediate costs, but also likely shorten duration until the next repair. This would prevent us to enjoy a pedestrian and bicycle path, and also us to actually measure how much emergency vehicle usage occurs before deciding what to do in the future. This is also, there is also a private offer to create a public 45-acre nature preserve, which is open to the public, plus a couple of miles of trails on some key routes with this option. We also don't need to rush into deciding. We can get here in haste, but we don't need to rush after we decide tonight. If we assume ownership, we can take the bridge as it is now for pedestrians and bicyclists, albeit there isn't emergency vehicle access. The immediate cost to Kennet Township would be relatively little, and would permit us to look for other sources of funding. This would not immediately address the current inability of emergency vehicles to cross the bridge, however, a primarily federally funded one would also not change that ability for at least the next eight years. We shouldn't take too long, though, if we take the bridge back, to, take the bridge, oh, not back, but ownership of it, to determine what to do, as the bridge may only last for a little while in its current state, and that mainly depends on future floods impacting the abutments for the foundation of the bridge. Other costs for a restored bridge include maintenance at approximately $5,000 or $6,000 a year, and in addition, the county has already spent about $250,000 on engineering a new two-way, two-lane bridge, and the township may have to pay some or all of that money to the county if it takes ownership. So while considering the options, I really did appreciate, all, do appreciate, all the input received at public meetings on this topic, and I suspect there'll be more to come. I also enjoy it when township residents have approached me with their thoughts, whether they see me out walking my dog, in the gym, or outrunning errands around town. To me, whether we agree or disagree, that's the beauty of a true participatory and open democracy. What I sincerely hope for the future is that any individual trying to improve our township is not being accused of acting in his or own interest, regardless of which side of an issue they're on. In this particular case, those who live or work near the bridge, or travel across it or used to, obviously or used to, obviously have a more personal impact from the decision being made, and thus a greater interest and more at stake than those of us who don't. Therefore, weighing the long-term benefits to the residents of Kennet Township to preserve a historic bridge at aid in the connection of our future trail, networked trails, and given consideration to preserving more open land in Kennet Township against those costs, I believe that we should request ownership of the Chandler, historic Chandler Mill Bridge from Chester County. Thank you for your attention.
I'm gonna try to be shorter than Rich on this.
Let's go to you first.
If I succeed. I recognize a number of things. That the, that the bridge has been closed for at least four years. And probably, as things are right now, it isn't going to be open for a little while yet. That traffic has been disrupted for that period. Emergency services have been disrupted. That the area has begun to accommodate to changed circumstances and conditions. That is, that the roads closed, the bridges closed, at that lower end. And that the surrounding roads and neighborhoods have been disrupted and disturbed by that fact. I recognize that the bridge continues to deteriorate without care as it currently is situated. That the bridge is a recognized national historic structure. That citizens are generally unaccepting of a two-lane bridge as a replacement. That citizens are generally unaccepting of continued temporary traffic interruption in the area. That it is estimated that it will be eight to ten years before this traffic, the road and bridge will be resolved and open for use if we await the completion by the county and the state and the federal consortium that's currently in place. But it will cost approximately one and a quarter million dollars to the township to complete the repairs, should we take ownership of the bridge. It will possibly require an additional charge to reimburse the county in the sum of a quarter of a million dollars. And one of the delays, why this has taken so long to reach for a vote, is trying to get a straight answer from the county as to reimbursement of that quarter of a million dollars. And the last message we have was that we aren't going to make any decisions until you make a decision. So somebody has to step off the starting line here, and so that's what is on the table And that it will take one and a half to two years to make the repairs if we take it back, as opposed to eight to ten years if we wait for the county, the state, and the federal government to do it. I also recognize that there are various possible other uses that can be linked to the repair of the historic bridge, but only if done by the township. And I'll defer to some of the listed suggestions that Rich made in his comments. Therefore, for the convenience of the community and in light of the anticipated inconvenience and delay, if we await completion by the county, state, federal consortium, I will vote in favor of taking ownership of the bridge from the county. So, any other comments from the board members? I hesitate to do this. Are there any comments from anybody in the group?
Do you want to remind them of?
And I remind everybody, we're looking for no more than five minutes.
Hi, this is Joan Wilkins. I'm a resident. I live near the bridge. I'm speaking on behalf of the Chandler Mill Bridge Consortium. The Chandler Mill Bridge Consortium was founded in 2005 by the late Jay Thomas Mills and currently boasts over three hundred members and several supporting organizations. For the past nine years, the consortium has not wavered from its original intent to preserve this steel plate through Gutter Bridge, built in 1910 and listed on the National Register of Historic Places. However, in the three and a half years since the bridge has been closed, other opportunities have arisen that offer an even better outcome for the residents of Kennet Township. This outcome is more aligned with why we all moved to Kennet in the first place. Meadows, cornfields, woodlands, open space, and a certain quality of life that is fast disappearing. Future uses that have been considered are, one, the retention and reconstruction of the bridge in its present form, or two, its conversion to a pedestrian walkway. More than six months ago, key members of the Chandler Mill Bridge Consortium formally proposed the following public resources if Kennet Township elects the pedestrian-only option. A local landlord and avid conservationist will donate to the Land Conservancy for Southern Chester County forty-five acres of private conservation lands adjacent to the historic Buckto Cemetery to create the Chandler Mill Nature Preserve. These lands will include a rare native plant meadow, an Audubon, Audubon Important Bird area, and Class I woodlands at the confluence of the Red Clay and Buckto Creeks. This generous gift includes perimeter trail easements along the Chandler Mill and Buckto Roads, providing critical linkages to the Red Clay Greenway, a ten-mile loop connecting the Kennet Borough to community assets. And you can see some charts up there with trails showing the dotted lines and things like that. You've seen those at a previous meeting. This illustrates the, the large nature of the donation. And, let's see here. The provision will be made in this, in this proposal for a $100,000 endowment for Kennet Township for the continued maintenance of the Chandler Mill Bridge as a pedestrian bridge. The Land Conservancy will work with Mrs. Mills to purchase Walnut Hill, a historic bed and breakfast at the base of the bridge, to become its headquarters and interpretive nature center for the Chandler Mill Nature Preserve. The Conservancy will also receive a gift of $100,000 to purchase and retrofit Walnut Hill for use as an interpretive nature center. The Conservancy will assume all of the costs and liability of the stewardship and maintenance of the Chandler Mill Nature Preserve, along with the headquarters and interpretive center. These generous donations for the benefit of the public, the value of which is worth well over a million dollars, is being offered to the township at no cost to the taxpayers. For these reasons, we humbly request that the township seize this once-in-a-long-time opportunity and choose the pedestrian-only option to ensure that this wonderful resource will be enjoyed by all residents for generations to come. We began this journey so that neighbors could continue to wave each other across the historic one-lane bridge from their vehicles, and we hope with the support of Kennet Township to complete this journey with neighbors, not only waving, but greeting each other face-to-face along the Red Clay Greenway Trail, or stopping to observe a billiarded woodpecker or cypress hawk together in the Chandler Mill Nature Preserve. This information that I just read and assures will be available on the back table there at the end of the meeting. And I thank you all very much for being able to present this.
Thank you for presenting it. Just so it's clear, that's not the motion that's on the table. But thank you for presenting, and I know where you're coming from. Are there any other comments from the audience? Okay, let's start over here with Mike.
Mike Allen again, yet again.
Still.
The, yes. The, the idea of Kennet Township owning a bridge seems, with what you have said in your motion, it doesn't give me too much confidence, A, about the potential liability, and no one has talked about that yet, which I think is a very important subject. But if you go ahead and, and purchase or take ownership of the bridge, then essentially you can do anything that you want with it. And I don't think that's in keeping with what John has proposed. And I, I have a lot of trouble with a township owning a bridge that will support traffic.
Pedestrian or vehicle.
Thank you, Mike. Chris, did you have, oh, no.
Yeah. I can leave.
Jim.
Jim, and then Chris.
Jim Shavatuski. The, two questions. One, if the township takes the bridge, as you were describing, can you elaborate more on the potential $250,000 or whatever that number was that the county may charge? But second, as, as Mike was alluding, if we take it, that opens up Pandora's Box for all expenses that are now going to be incurred on that bridge, maintenance, legal liabilities, and things of that nature. And if you recall, at one point in the early discussions, there had been issues raised that the bridge was going to not meet federal standards relative to floods. And forgive me, I forget the formal definition of that standard. But even if we did nothing, does that mean, I'm sorry, if township takes the bridge, does that mean we're on the hook to do anything that's going to be required to raise the bridge irrespective of vehicular traffic?
Raise R-A-I-S-E or R-A-Z-E?
Actually, I like that. Yeah. Raise R-A.
The fact is that, that we spent, we, the township has spent several years going through in great detail, looking at the, the issues related to the bridge. And we had various engineering firms, the current engineering firm for the township and the previous engineering firm for the township, and third-party engineering firms that have nothing to do with the township, but were giving us independent consultation. We've had several public meetings, one of which was held, as you will no doubt remember, in the worst storm of the last 500 years, but it's only been a year. And I was down there watching the water go over the, the bridge. I saw the pictures of it, so I understand where you're coming from, but the, the township has looked very closely at this. The, the transcript of those various meetings are both recorded visually, audibly, and by transcript, so you can read it. And we have, from our engineers, a very clear statement that one of the options that we're considering, one that, that Rich outlined for us, one of several that he outlined for us, included rebuilding the bridge to its historic standard, such that it would carry 20 tons, so that's going to carry the emergency vehicles that it's going to go across. And that, I just lost my train of thought, I'm sorry. So, it does not require R-A-I-S-I-N-G, the bridge. This was in the context of it meeting the historic certification during the rebuild and after the rebuild. So the answer is that to the best of our efforts, and we've tried to be very diligent in doing our due diligence, looking into these questions, we believe that these things can be done. And done, and we've looked at what it's going to cost for liability insurance to, to cover the potentials of, of having this bridge. And so far, we believe that, like the other bridges that the township owns, this one will fall into line with, with reasonable standards. Okay. Chris?
Chris Burkett again. I just wanted to say, you know, perpetuity is a mighty long time, and there can be a lot of costs that are associated for this, this acquisition, if you will, that will be experienced by not only the people sitting in this room this evening, but future generations of Kennet Township folks who move here. It's unfortunate, I guess, that something couldn't be hammered out with the county, but I'm just wondering why the township has to take sole responsibility for the bridge if it's being incorporated into some type of, you know, consortium, I guess the word was used earlier, that's going to own property and have a headquarters right adjacent to it. Was the possibility of exploring joint ownership or, you know, something other than the, the township taking the hit for all the liability and responsibility for maintenance?
There have been various discussions about the proposal that was made tonight, as well as other proposals. Those have not been worked out. We have, we have not reached a resolution on any of those issues. As consequence, the only thing we're doing at this point is deciding whether we're going to take ownership of the bridge. And what happens after that is going to be determined after that.
And there still is opportunity to work with the county. There still is opportunity to work with the county regarding the $250,000. They just wouldn't start negotiating that with us until this vote was taken. So we, we may be relieved of some of those funds, hopefully.
Right. And with regards to finances, I think there are potential granting agencies that we can apply to, but if you don't own something, it's sort of hard to apply for grants, so...
I did apply for a grant.
You did?
For, um...
Never miss a shot.
We applied for a grant to reimburse us 80% of the rehab of the bridge, whatever it ends up being. We don't know the results of that grant yet, but we have a tie.
And then many other funding sources, or there may be private parties that, we heard one today, that may help. So, so we put it out the costs for the two different rehabilitation options, but who will actually bear those costs, we'll, we'll have to see over time. There are also, if you look at the map when you come in, the road I live on, South Fairville Road, used to go straight across a stream. That road and presumably a bridge was there some time ago, but isn't there now. So bridges do come and go in Kennet Township in terms of how they get used and do they make, are they maintained, or do they eventually somehow get replaced?
So, just, just one follow-up. So in the, so absent any other funding? People out there would like to hear you say...
Just give me a minute.
Okay. So, absent any other funding or any of this other thing coming out with this consortium of neighbors, if I heard you right, it was like, so it's the possible liability of $250,000 paid back to the county and the rehab of the bridge to be somewhere between 1.75 and 1.25, was that what it was?
No, .75 and 1.25 million for the actual work on the bridge.
Okay.
And, and what work and also engineering costs and historic engineering costs that Bob was...
Yeah, I think, I think that's, I hear what you're saying about other engineering, you know, proposals or costing on that, but that sounds light to me. But, but, so, so it's like a million and a half roughly, or between a million and a million and a half to the township taxpayers? Is that what I'm hearing?
Including a payback to the county, it would be a million and a half is what is, what we have been able to determine.
To reopen it to traffic. That would, that would be the option, to reopen it to traffic.
Tell me. I think Mike was next, and then, here.
So if, I may try to boil this down to its essence. If we don't take back the bridge, then we will lose a historic bridge, for sure. None of the proposals that are... None of the proposals that are on the table fit with the county taking...continuing to own the bridge and rehab it. And we will have to wait somewhere in the order of eight to 10 years for a conclusion of this. In addition, as I understand it, and I'm not sure this was mentioned, we will probably have costs associated with maintaining and expanding the road to deal with the additional traffic of a two-lane bridge. So in essence, we'll have no control of this process for nearly a decade. If we take back the bridge, we have a whole range of options open to us that are consistent with its historical nature and with the interests of many of the residents, including the ones that are making some fairly interesting proposals. And we can proceed on this based on funding that...other funding that we can receive, other options that we can explore, which is difficult to do now because we don't own the bridge. Is that a pretty fair assessment?
Not only is it fair, Mike, it's accurate.
Thank you very much for your clarification.
Yes, Richard Godd... Thank you, Chief, yes. Richard Godd, Chester County Press, just a question for Lisa. If you could just go into the grant you applied for a little bit more deeply, and also give us the name of the organization you're applying to for this grant.
It was DCNR. And the grant we applied for was a million and a half. And that was a grant that if we get the grant, if we rehab the bridge, they'll reimburse us 80% of our costs, once the project's complete.
Thank you. There are also other potential granting agencies.
Yes, there are. I don't know the names of them right now, but I know there are.
Any other comments from the audience? Okay. I guess we weigh the vote. On our favor.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
No. On behalf of the Kennet Township taxpayers, I approve, no.
The resolution passes two to one now. That gets us down to our agenda. Combination of RC2 and RC3 retirement ordinances and the planning commission process and procedures. And we have about half the planning commission here, which is a real good light. The only thing is, if you're going to talk to me, Jim, you have to use a microphone.
Well, actually, I'm going to speak. Jim is...
Oh, okay.
We'll need to use a mic.
Okay. I'll tell you the truth, I'm not sure what it is we're going to be doing here, so...
What should we say?
Are we going to have a round robin discussion? What is it that you...what would the planning commission like to do?
I'm going to hand something out to explain to the board.
Okay. Do we need to pull it up on the wall?
Can we display it? Lisa, can you display this?
Sure.
Let everybody in the room consider it.
Yeah. Chief's got it. Thank you. Okay. Thank you. And if it's okay, I'll just sit down and use the mic.
That's fine. Or you can use the hand mic the chief has.
Chief has it. It's easier.
Would I be correct in saying that what this is about, just trying to give a background to the community, there is some confusion about the procedures that have been followed slash should be followed when there is a question of ordinances being proposed vis-à-vis the planning commission versus the board of supervisors. And in the last couple of days, there's been a concern expressed from the planning commission that maybe we...the board has not been transparent in expressing what we want and what we're doing. And so the planning commission has asked for an opportunity to address the board on these issues. There are other things that may go beyond that as we talk, but I think that that's the background that's about it. Is there a fair category session?
Yes, that's correct. And we're going to try to cover two birds with one stone, if you would.
Sure.
And again, I'm Jim Shvetuski, I'm the vice chair of the Kennet Township Planning Commission. And the impetus to this was we have currently a retirement community two zoning that has been in effect since 2011. That's on the books. And it would allow a specific type of retirement community, which would be age-restricted, 62 or above, and with an income standard, basically based on the federal guidelines. And the intention was to have housing that would be affordable for senior citizens to remain within Kennet Township. And there were very specific zoning districts that would allow this. A couple months ago, the board had received a request from a citizen to basically change the ordinance. And that started the discussion that we're now trying to explain a little bit further. And what we have on the screen is the conventional process that's actually defined by the Pennsylvania Municipality's Planning Code in terms of how a change to a zoning ordinance would be developed. And what we wanted to do was to sort of walk through what the process should be, and then we could characterize it somewhat with the way we're interpreting the process as how it occurred, and then we'd go from there. In the normal course of events, a zoning ordinance can be created by one of three ways. Either A, the board of supervisors will initiate a request for a zoning change or ordinance change, or second, a citizen could propose a change, or third, the planning commission could initiate a change. So somebody comes in with an idea that says, gee, I'd like to do something X, and that starts the process. Now, under the Pennsylvania Municipality's Planning Code, Section 2209.1, the planning commission is charged with the responsibility to prepare and present to the governing body a zoning ordinance and/or make the recommendations to the governing body on a proposed amendment. So typically what would happen is, let's say the board had a proposal or an idea for a zoning change, the expectation would be that they would then approach the planning commission and basically say, here's what we're thinking of doing. It doesn't need to be very detailed, it could be very general, but basically it starts the process. They hand it over to the planning commission. The planning commission then, on item three, begins its work. And that work could take on many different forms. Typically, we, the planning commission, we would start discussing it amongst ourselves. We were assigned to perhaps a subcommittee or something to that effect, if appropriate. But what we begin to do is to now start to reach out to the various bodies that are already in place within the township. For example, we would sit with the township solicitor, as appropriate, the zoning officer, the public works director, the landscape architect. These are the consultants or the employees that we already have on staff, so we're going to start there, picking their brain. What do you think? What should we do? Now, this isn't necessarily a sequential process, but we start there, then we're going to reach out and also work with the various township committees that are in place, the safety committee, the environmental advisory committee, the historical commission. Again, these are existing groups within the township. So now we're gathering up the information. Then at some point, we, the planning commission, begin to liaison with what we call the external agencies. That could include the Chester County Planning Commission, the Brandywine Conservancy, or other groups that are in a position to either provide us with input, guidance, advice, feedback on what that zoning proposal might be. An example of where we took an idea for alternative energy, you know, with solar power and wind power and things of that nature. So we reach out to the Brandywine Conservancy, and because of their expertise and their ability to then reach out to other agencies throughout the state, they begin to either provide us with recommended draft language, or they begin to provide us with pros and cons of the ordinance. And we start going through that process, and yes, it's within the planning commission. The discussions are being held in an open forum within the planning commission itself, and at that point, it's an idea that's beginning to take hold of a concept, and we're starting to narrow it down to what we believe would be needed. At some point, we, the planning commission, again, working with our consultants, will draft an ordinance. And that ordinance is then going to be discussed within the planning commission, again, because like with all these things, as you heard with the bridge, you have an idea, and everybody hears the same words, but everybody interprets it just a little bit differently. So what we're trying to do is to make sure we all understand from the planning commission what it is, because at some point, the planning commission would then make a motion to either recommend it to the board for approval, or to basically table it and start from scratch, perhaps. Now mind you, the planning commission does not enact the ordinance. We can only recommend to the board that they would take it to the next step, have their public meetings, and then vote on it. So that's sort of the process...well, it's not sort of, that is the process to be used in the creation of an ordinance. Now what we did with this so-called change the retirement community zoning is what was different, in that when the board had received the input suggesting a change be needed in the zoning, the board, you immediately asked the solicitor to basically form an ordinance, draft an ordinance. At least, that's our interpretation, because what we received was basically an ordinance proposal. And we didn't receive comments that said, you know, a person X suggested a change in the zoning district, put it into commercial, or to change the size or anything like that. It was more of, here's the proposal. And the board, you did ask us for input. I think basically it was, you would like our review. The planning commission, in reviewing what the proposal was, basically said, well, two things. One, we weren't all quite in agreement with the change. But second, we also recognized because the existing ordinance had some deficiencies that we saw, we basically felt, well, this was a good opportunity to, in essence, rewrite. So in the spirit of taking the input, as well as using our own initiative, we asked for permission to make use of the township landscape architect, Tom Komodo. We formed a special subcommittee within the planning commission, and we basically came up with a revised ordinance. In essence, a new ordinance was being proposed, which was going to be the retirement community two. We were going to change the zoning districts that it was in, and we made some modifications to that. What we did, and this is where admittedly, from a board perspective, it gets a little bit klugey, normally what we would do is to make a formal motion after we, the planning commission, if you would, in step, I guess would be five, we would have made a formal recommendation to say, here's a new ordinance, and we recommend that you adopt it. What we basically did instead was, we gave you a revised ordinance, a new ordinance, if you would, which was in response to your request for our review. Basically, our review was, thanks, but here's a new one. And we gave you that new ordinance. And we wanted you to then review it, come back to us with any comments. Then depending on what those comments were, the following month, we would probably have made a formal recommendation then to move it on, assuming that there was no issue. If there was an issue, we would have done something with it. Instead, what happened, then at your next public meeting, again, our perception is because you felt you didn't get a comment back from us. And so then, in response to the citizen's input, you basically felt that that zoning wasn't being...the change wasn't being made as per that citizen's request. So at some point now, a draft version of some ordinance language has been provided to us, again, only as a draft. So the process somewhere along the line became a bridge, or broke. And what we're trying to do is to say, no, look, you know, let's go back to the way it should be. You received the input, you now make the request to us, basically tell us what you believe the deficiencies are, and when I say you, I don't mean from a board perspective, but as you're hearing that, and give us then the opportunity to work with the various groups to figure out what we want to do. And then either A, we give you back the ordinance, a new ordinance, changes to an existing ordinance, where we basically say, no, we have to have discussion. So that was the process.
Can we respond?
Sure.
Okay. I'm going to...I want to make one brief comment about facts, as I see them very specifically, but then we'll turn it over to legal counsel to respond on the technical. And I'm going to ask Lisa, who is the keeper of the memory of this township, to comment on what, in fact, our records reflect. But I do want to say that the question of the zoning for doing a senior housing project was brought to my attention maybe a year ago, it wasn't just a month or two ago. It's been...it's been brewing at some level within the township for a goodly period of time. Secondly, the fact that somebody, a citizen, as you say, spoke about it at last month's board of supervisors' meeting, did not change the thinking of what the board was doing and the concern with the process. And the process was... And the process was, we asked for a written critique, your comments, to what our legal counsel put together, and we never got it. So I'm going to let counsel speak, and then we'll get Lisa to speak, and then I'm going to come back to make a couple of comments, and perhaps the other supervisors will want to join in as well.
Sure, and then we'll have some feedback.
Okay. So many things to say, so little time. I don't know. I have been a municipal solicitor for 26 years, and I've worked with numerous planning commissions in their relationship with the elected body. And candidly, this is the first planning commission that I have ever encountered that has interpreted its role according to the nice colorful exhibit that is displayed. I have never seen, other than an original zoning ordinance, a planning commission-initiated ordinance of any kind whatsoever.
Well, take a look at our alternative energy ordinance.
Okay.
As an example.
Jim? I didn't stop you, and I respect the heck out of you and the planning commission members. This is not personal, this is about procedure, and it's about my experience, and it's about my advice to this board of supervisors. And I know we're going to agree to disagree at the end of it, but I'm just probably in my perspective. The MPC, as you quote, says, "And make recommendations to the governing body on proposed amendments." In my mind, and what I've told this board is, a recommendation is a letter from the planning commission saying, "We've reviewed the alternative energy provisions of the ordinance, and we recommend that you address this issue. If you'd like the township solicitor to delve into it, then we'll be happy to review his ordinance. If you want us to delve into it and come up with a proposed ordinance, please advise us accordingly, and we will be happy to do so." Note, not on that list is decide yourself that you need an ordinance and draft it and submit it to the board of supervisors. Okay? Because that's, because you're recommending that a proposed ordinance be drafted, you're not ordinance drafters, you are reviewers of ordinances, and you are makers of recommendations regarding those ordinances. With regard to the specific ordinance at issue, you were given an ordinance. If you had questions on where it came from or why it was being proposed, you should have asked those questions at the time you received it, or at your first meeting after you were assigned to review it and comment on it. And I believe, and again, we can agree to disagree, that at least a portion of the planning commission knew that Mr. Beer had proposed an ordinance amendment, and it was specifically designed to fall into the citizen petition at the top, if you will, a citizen request for a text amendment to the zoning ordinance. The board of supervisors authorized me to draft that ordinance. This is how, in my opinion, it should work. The ordinance is drafted, the board of supervisors sent, or Lisa, on behalf of the board, sends the ordinance to the township planning commission and the county planning commission pursuant to the municipality's planning code requirement, that both planning commissions, if they exist, are required to review and have 30 days to submit their recommendation on the ordinance to the board of supervisors. Nowhere in the municipality's planning code does it say, tear the ordinance up, fire the, I'm sorry, Tom, but I'm going to use you in this, because you were involved, call up the township's landscape architect slash planner, and I will agree that you did ask permission to do that, you were granted that permission, but draft a whole new ordinance, and hand it back to the board, and then flip the tables on the roles of the board versus the planning commission, and say, we want your comments, board of supervisors, on the ordinance that we have drafted. Here it is, please give us your comments and recommendations on whether this ordinance meets your needs or not. To complete, in my view, unacceptable role reversal between the role of the planning commission and the role of the board of supervisors. What you should have done, if you didn't like the ordinance that the board authorized me to draft, or wanted to, thought that it was done in a vacuum, or that you didn't really know what the purposes were, was write a letter to the board of supervisors asking for an explanation of the purpose, the reason, and what the goals of the ordinance were. That's commenting on the ordinance, and it's recommending to the board of supervisors whether the ordinance should or shouldn't be adopted and acted in its current form, which is my view of the role of the planning commission.
Well, actually, in all honesty, we're in agreement. We're in absolute agreement. What was missing on both sides was a formal communication and a formal written document. In fact, the comment that we made yesterday in our planning commission was, we were relying on minutes. And what we should have received was a, if you would, a, let's just say, a formal memo from the board, which said, here's what happened, you know, you drafted something, and we would like your comments. We agree. What we should have done was to say, in a formal written document, here's our response. What we did, obviously, didn't work out, because we thought we were responding, and the board wasn't interpreting that way, because you were basically saying, where was the response? And yes, in a sense, we ripped it up and said, well, we might as well start from scratch. So we're in agreement.
But we're not, really.
Can Lisa deal with the facts?
Pardon?
Can Lisa deal with the facts of what happened?
Sure. Well, I'm addressing the bigger picture. I did use this ordinance as an example of what I saw, breakdown in the roles of the planning commission and the board of supervisors. I'm using it as an example.
David, let me just mention one item. With your insight, but remember, the diagram that I have up there is basically the process that has been used in this township for years.
Yes. I'm here to correct that. I'm not saying that in all earnestness, with all due respect to the planning commission. I think the planning commission is incredibly talented, I think they have years of experience, and can provide guidance to this board of supervisors when requested to do so. We just disagree with the scope of the responsibility of the planning commission versus the scope of the board of supervisors. There's just a disagreement on that.
Yeah, and I think the one item, just for clarification, right, when you mentioned the scope, by no means is the planning commission sitting there saying, geez, let's do X on our own.
I thought that, in this case, you didn't like the ordinance you saw, so you decided to draft a new ordinance.
Yes.
That's what we liked, that's deciding to do X.
No, that was our interpretation of the board asking for a review. So what was missing? Yeah, we should have had a dialogue.
What I don't want to have to do each time we send you an ordinance under the MPC for a 30-day review period, is to have to write a letter, and we can write a letter saying, here's the ordinance, please review it, saying to you, please do not draft a new ordinance, please do not request to use the other parties and, you know, get together with outside agencies, please discuss this amongst yourselves, and submit a succinct review on this ordinance only. You don't want to have to do that. That's what was missing in this case.
What was missing was the formal request.
I sent a formal request to the planning commission from the supervisors with the ordinance. I was telling you guys, first of all, let me back up. First of all, the applicant in this case has been discussing this for every year, came to a couple of planning commission meetings about it prior to finally approaching the board. That's what happened.
Right.
Correct? And then he approached the board about it, he came to a public meeting, asked that the board would address his concerns and address the ordinance. Supervisors asked Dave Sander to create a draft ordinance, which he did. I then sent that ordinance to the planning commission, explained to you guys that they want you to review it.
Right.
The supervisors did, and then during that time, you guys asked for more time, they granted more time.
Correct.
The supervisors did give you permission to engage Tom Comida to work on the ordinance with you.
Right.
The planning commission then submitted their comments on the ordinance and asked for the supervisors' review comments. What happened is, the supervisors wanted explanation from Tom Comida on the draft ordinance that you guys helped create. So they asked him to come to a meeting, and he explained it. While he was here, George Beers, one of his employees, read a letter explaining some deficiencies in that ordinance. So Tom discussed it with the supervisors, a way to address them, and create RC3.
Right.
So he did. That ordinance has, I gave that to you guys as a courtesy, because I didn't want you to find out there's an ordinance out there that you haven't seen. I didn't ask you to review it, I just gave it to you as a courtesy.
Correct.
The supervisors have not decided what they were going to do with all of the ordinances. That's why it was on the agenda tonight to discuss, because now they have three new ordinances to discuss. So that's the history.
I'm sorry, three.
Well, we have the one the planning commission created, the one Dave created, and the one Tom created.
Oh, okay, yeah.
And we have the one in existence right now.
Right.
The way it should work is, we hand you the ordinance, you review it and submit your comments on that ordinance and return it to the board of supervisors. The board of supervisors then reads your comments and says, that's a good point, we didn't think, that's bad planning, to put an RC2 in the commercial zoning district. We agree with your recommendation, we're not going to do that, or we're going to change the ordinance and amend it, and submit it for another review, if you will, or to take your comments and say, that's nice, I don't agree with that, we're going to go ahead and enact the ordinance. Your role is to recommend and comment, not to submit a new ordinance and to initiate legislation. You're not legislator, you're recommendatory. These guys are legislators.
Well, merely, I think on that point, we can have additional discussion on that.
In what manner?
Because I really don't think the planning commission would agree with that, but I think what we should do is have a discussion with you on that.
I thought that's what we're doing right now.
No, I mean, further with the whole planning.
I'm not trying to be with.
No, and in order of what you're raising is, again, different than the 20-plus, 30-plus years that we've had of experience, where the planning commission has been, has had a very cooperative relationship with the board. And this is really the first time that this type of friction, if you would, my word, has occurred. That's one of the reasons why, yes, we want to talk this thing through and understand, because if the procedures need to be tightened up, that's what we want to do. The degree of formality of the communication is definitely an issue. We're not talking about having formal, where we can't do anything unless we get a piece of paper, that's not what we're there for. But at the same time, we're trying to understand them. What is that process? Because the board's changing, you're changing, there's new procedures. So we're all trying to understand what it is. But at the same time, yes, the existing ordinance is there, and right now, there's at least, well, as you say, there's two other versions. Well, I'm sorry, there is a version of the RC2 that was proposed, and now there's a draft of a new ordinance for an RC3.
Which made a perfectly good sense.
Correct.
I would have Tom Comida, you know, I trust him to save my life, because he's experienced and knows, he is a national expert on planning and issues like that. If an R3 is more appropriate than your job is to say to this board, and we'll clear this up, and we'll establish the rules in some way, I guess, planning commission's job is to say, we think that changing the R2, RC2, I said, not R2, RC2, is not in the best interest, because there's already development there under that use, and it would render that development non-conforming, or for whatever other reason there might be. We would like to propose an R3 district, you know, can we discuss that with you, and can we meet with you to discuss it? Not go out and draft an R3 ordinance and come back and give it to the board of supervisors seeking its comments. Now, to put the whole thing in perspective, I assume that for the last 20 or 30 years, the board of supervisors had been fine with that relationship, where, as I said before, I had never seen so much initiative and original work done by a planning commission, but maybe the board of supervisors was fine with that. And if this board of supervisors, and they're all here, is fine with that, then so be it. But they've asked my opinion as to what the role of the planning commission is, and I have given them my opinion based on the municipality's planning code and my experience about what the role of the planning commission is. So it's up to this board whether to take my advice and change the last 20 or 30 years and refine it, and make it more to this board's liking, or to allow things to go on the way that they have. So I'm going to defer to the board, obviously, to discuss the role that they would like to see of the planning commission, but I've given them my recommendation. And I think that the overlying issue that does not appear on this piece of paper, I believe the municipality's planning code says several times, act the direction of the board of supervisors.
That's correct.
Okay.
209.1, that's the diagram.
And I didn't see that.
Right.
Suffice to say, it's there. And this board is the one that's going to say, we want the planning commission to have a broad role and go out and draft ordinances and suggest them to us, or if they don't like an ordinance, we draft, draft their own and bring it back. Or they're going to say, we would like your comments and recommendation on this ordinance only, please limit your role to the performance of that duty, and thank you very much.
And you're right, it's up to the board.
Those are my comments.
Thank you.
I want to comment as well, but would you like to join the conversation, Tom?
Tom, I'm already submitting, and Tom has more experience than I do. So my 26 years, you can just, you know, tear up and throw away.
Thank you for giving me a chance to speak. Tom Comida, town planner and landscape architect, first working in Kent Township in 1974. For any of us who've been married two or more times, this conversation sounds like previous discussions that I've had with Xs. But at the end... But at the end of the day, when we wake up tomorrow morning, or next week, or next month, I think the benefit of the dialogue is a greater understanding and appreciation of where everyone sits. At least that's been my experience going through some painful personal experiences. Secondly, I think the basic fundamental principle at issue is we all love Kennebtownship. And I think what I've seen with the Planning Commission this year and in previous years is the Planning Commission is very passionate about community values and keeping Kennebtownship as good as it can be and to make it as good as it can be in the future. And I think their zeal to do that is demonstrated in different ways and was demonstrated in what happened. And I think in one respect, I'm apologizing because I may have complicated the dialogue because I did sit with the Subcommittee and we did, I sat at the October 15th Supervisors' meeting when Scudder said, so what did they think? I said, they rejected it. In other words, when the Planning Commission were given the ordinance to review, it was almost like our Subcommittee said, well, we rejected. But we never actually said those words. We just said, we need to start over. And so I apologize that I didn't have the leadership to step up and say, OMG, Dave Sanders really going to be upset with me when I helped the Subcommittee, you know, write this ordinance. Then to complicate.
It's a little frightening, Walter.
So I apologize. Then to make it even more difficult, I came to the October 15th meeting and the Supervisors said, well, they didn't actually say they rejected RC2 either, but you could tell the Subcommittee didn't pass the sniff test on what Dave wrote and the Supervisors didn't pass the sniff test on what we wrote for RC2. So I'm sitting where Dave's sitting and I'm going, oh no, now what are we going to do? Because I said, two days later, the 17th, I was going to hatch something else. So what I said to the Supervisors, October 15th, is the Subcommittee felt that the vitality of RC2 should not be undermined in ways that were being considered, but instead be strengthened like what we thought we did. In the meantime, when I scrubbed through the C District, which is the only home left for this idea, I made certain discoveries about the intensity of uses otherwise permitted by right, special exception, and conditional use. And on balance, tried to hatch something that was mediating between what Dave wrote and what the RC2 did. In the process, I made other discoveries. So if we were to say tonight, is RC3 ripe for action? I did make a discovery that didn't actually get daylighted, and that is probably back in 1950, the township allowed boarding houses in the C3 district. And boarding houses are defined in a certain way and they're governed by a certain section of the ordinance. Well, you could actually do six times more than what RC3 would allow, only governed by 35% building cover and 50% impervious. And you could have a Smurf village of boarding houses on a five-acre site that would create like biblical proportion of density.
A Smurf village.
Like a Smurf village, yes.
Small, spooky.
So what we learned in the Subcommittee is that every time you tinker with one section of the ordinance, there's another definition or section that you have to look at. And in my haste to get the ordinance out that I promised on the 15th, on the 17th, I overlooked that. And so my sincere hope would be that we would repeal the definition of boarding house, whatever allows in the C District, and all the provisions for boarding house. Because I don't think with all the other protections that we have in the ordinance, we any longer need it. And I venture to say, although I don't know this, there probably haven't been any boarding houses since that was first written, probably in the 1950s. So, but I think the best part of the discussion is the kind of mutual understanding of the process, deferring ultimately to the solicitor. But I don't think it was because...
Probably holding down the button.
I don't think it was the Planning Commission felt that they were the king of the hill. I think it was their passion to do the best job that they thought they could do.
But yeah, and I think we just need to clarify the role. And I agree with Tom 20%, I know the Planning Commission is very dedicated to this township and they wanted, in fact, give them what benefit of their knowledge and hard work.
We had some discussion ourselves amongst, you know, the question of who drafts the ordinance, who writes the ordinance, right? The writing, in a sense, is immaterial. It's the content, it's the subject area, it's the provisions. And at that point, that's really where we're trying to make the contribution. The actual writing of it, the one area, which if we had written a formal review, the one item that we were also trying to do with that so-called, the new ordinance, was recognizing that there were definitions and other, we were trying to look at the overall set of ordinances and make sure that everything was going to be in there. And that's one of the reasons why we took that effort to provide a quote, "new ordinance" on the RC2.
Jim, I want to go on record as seconding the things that Dave has said. Speaking for myself, and I believe I can also do this for the other members of the Board, we have the highest respect for the initiative and the creativity and the valuable input the Planning Commission provides. And when I first came on the Board, I remember my first attendances to the PC and you were working on that energy ordinance. And frankly, I don't know where it came from. It was an overwhelming tome and certainly I learned that it came through Brandywine, it was drafted by a consultant.
Brandywine Conservancy drafted it. That was a PC initiated because basically, as we looked around in the township, we could begin seeing the developments of solar farms, specifically as an example, the Longwood Solar Panels that are up here, up the road. That started the discussion. The recognition of geothermal and the more immediate concerns of where was the first windmill in the township going to be placed?
Yeah.
And that started the discussion of saying, we've got to get out ahead of that.
Yeah. And so I'm saying that I do respect that. I know there were other ordinances that were proposed and came through the Board, down to the Planning Commission for review, some of which you said they weren't your purview. I think one of them was the gun legislation. You sort of got into that, but then said, we really, this is not our area, and kissed that off. But there were other things, like the rental properties that would have been more appropriate. And so I'm suggesting that we do respect the work you do and that initiative and that creativity. And I think that there is, to continue with, the history of the interrelationship is valuable to continue that. But getting it clear as to what, when the Board initiates something, what's to happen. See, and so you understand my dilemma. I get back your proposals when I look at it and I see that it's different from what I sent to you and with the instructions given, your comments. And so I need now to interpret what your ordinance says, so that if it says age 55 instead of 62, there's a distinction. I don't know why there's a distinction between age 55 and 62, but I can assume that that's a disapproval of what we proposed. And so now I have to go forward and decide what I want to do because I don't have that input. That's just one example.
And that's good input. That's an example of where our communication back could have been better.
Yeah. And so my reality is that what you were proposing was very different. And so when, at the October 15th meeting, I asked, I grilled Tom, I didn't mean to do it as a grill, but I asked him a lot of questions about why this, why that, why this, why that, trying to understand what it was. Well, why couldn't it be, why did it have to be a 501(c)(3) charitable exempt organization? Somebody in the back of the room, not David, who was not here, but some other council who was here for a totally different purpose, had nothing to do with this, put up his hands and said, you might want to check, take a look at our case here, look over the voting hearing board and see what it says about that. And I did, and he was right, because I read it, that you couldn't do what you were proposing to do. So we had all these different problems and what we were trying to do was something else. And so we didn't talk as a group to try to solve these problems because we didn't have your feedback to be able to do it. So I'm sort of left with a conclusion, maybe we have two ordinances. We have an RC2, which you guys have authored and we put that through as an RC2, and we'll do an RC3, which we authored, and gives us 30 different animals. And we have two different ones and George Beer or whoever else comes along that wants to do a nonprofit or a senior housing project in the township can have his choices to which way he wants to go. But that's what I'm left with at this point.
Yeah, that could very well be a possibility. But at some point, then, the Board will formally send to the Planning Commission RC3.
When are they actually coming, what?
Yeah, well, maybe not. I mean, they already formally sent you RC2.
But RC3 can be a new zoning district, a new zoning ordinance, and so it has to come to us.
If they want to consider, but I...
Yeah, they want to consider that type of ordinance.
I want to make a comment, and if you disagree with me, Board of Supervisors, let me know. Respectfully to the Planning Commission, don't draft any more ordinances unless you are specifically authorized by the Board of Supervisors to draft those ordinances.